All right. Good morning, everyone. If you take a seat. Thank you for coming out this Saturday morning and thank you for those who are watching online. My name is Sam Shirazi. I am one of the co-chairs of Arlington Blue Families. We are a family-friendly organization within the Arlington Democrats that is trying to encourage people with family and kids to get involved. And we're going to have more this fall and the summer in terms of the midterms coming up and doing some campaign work. But today we are here for the school board election that will be this year in Arlington. And this is something that is important to me because I have two daughters, one of whom will be starting at Takahoe Elementary in the fall. So we will be hearing from Bethany Sutton, who will be the candidate that is seeking the Arlington Democrats endorsement. And the people in the audience, after Bethany's introduced herself, feel free to raise your hand if you have a question. We will also be asking questions. And we hope this will be an interesting morning where you get to know a little bit more about Bethany and hear about her vision for Arlington schools. So without further ado, I would bring Bethany up. She will introduce herself and just explain why she's running for Arlington School Board. Thank you.
Thanks. Good morning. It's good to see everyone. So I guess I'll start by just quickly talking a little bit about sort of the background that I have and the things that I care about. I actually always like to start with what I care about. So, you know, I have been involved for a long time with Arlington Public Schools and I care deeply about student learning. And I really want all students to have an outstanding education. And I think we do have really good schools in Arlington. I think we have tremendous teachers. I think we have a really strong foundation to build from. And of course, I also think that there's, you know, work that needs to be done. And, you know, in particular, we have a significant achievement gap. And there are kids, you know, African-American kids, Hispanic kids in our system who are not doing well. And that's been the situation for a long time and also has gotten worse during the pandemic. And so that is an area where I hope that we all can really dig deep and figure out what are the strategies that we need for those kids. And honestly, I think often if we focus on the strategies for those kids, we will, it will be to the benefit of all kids in our system. And so I care a lot about that. I care a lot about sort of bringing to the center groups of kids who are sort of marginalized and, you know, students with disabilities and students who are not as well-served by our system and thinking about those kids first when we're thinking about student learning. So another thing that I really think is the case is that we can't, we can't achieve sort of a real renewed focus on student learning if we are not focused on all the sort of mental health and well-being and sort of basic skills for our kids. And really, it's the health and well-being, it's about all the members of our community. It's about teachers and staff, those who are sort of in those student-facing positions, and parents as well. We've just been through this tremendous period of disruption and everyone has been struggling. And, you know, I often think about the analogy of sort of putting on your own oxygen mask before you help others. And that is very much what we need right now, right? With teachers, with parents. And there are ways that the schools and APS as an employer can really support their employees and provide resources and things for parents so that we all collectively can improve sort of the climate and the culture within our schools and help students get to the place where they really can engage in their learning. You know, all the ways that I think about things are really grounded in a pretty, a really deep commitment that I have to diversity, equity, inclusion. And I really care a lot when I think about our students, about inclusion and people feeling like they belong in our schools. Families, students, everyone with all the diversity that they bring. I think it's really important that we have a climate and a culture that is inclusive. And I've been looking a lot at the agenda that's laid out in the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at APS. And it's a, it's a really good agenda of things to do. And it's the kind of thing where it is going to require a strong commitment over time. So, you know, we have to sort of dig deep and say, we want to do these things and it's going to take time to do these things. It's going to take time to move the needle on things. There's an agenda around sort of moving into sort of restorative justice, right, for kids. And so when there's behavior issues, you know, when you look at our middle schoolers, and there's a lot going on in middle school. And are we, are we just punishing kids and labeling kids and saying, well, this kid, this, let's, you know, this kid is the problem? Or are we sort of being inclusive and sort of taking that restorative justice sort of approach and helping, you know, bringing the parents in, bringing teachers in, helping the kids move forward in sort of whatever it is that they're grappling with? And again, getting them to a place where they can have that sort of academic achievement that we hope for. And I guess the last thing I'll say by way of introduction in terms of my, my agenda or my interests is really that I think, you know, I'm a proponent of sort of very careful, thoughtful planning in our system that is attentive to data, but also is attentive sort of the narratives and the stories and the lived experiences of teachers and students, right? You can, you can look at a bunch of data, you know, the data dashboard is out there right now and everybody's sort of looking at that. But you have to really unpack that data and understand what's going on in a more holistic sense than just sort of looking at the numbers on a spreadsheet. So, a quick, I guess, bio information about me. I have, I've been an APS parent for 11 years. I have a 10th grader and a 7th grader. I spent many years involved with Randolph Elementary School. I was on the PTA board there for seven years. That's an IB school, a Title I school in South Arlington. I was the PTA president for three years. I did lots of things in that role related to sort of facilities improvement. It's a building that was sort of falling down around us when we were in it. And still, it's still, the roof at Randolph was, I noticed the roof and the kitchen were on the CIP proposal this past week, as well as many other facilities improvements that need, are needed. I have, for the past couple of years, have run the food pantry at Randolph Elementary School, which is something that we launched during the pandemic. And it's still going. I was just, I was telling Miranda earlier that I am very sore today because I ran the food pantry, pantry yesterday and I did literally a lot of heavy lifting. So I, a couple of years ago, about four years ago, I joined the Advisory Council on Teaching and Learning, which is a group that I now chair. So I, my head is always sort of in this space of teaching and learning. My background is in higher education and I worked for many years for an organization that was, whose mission was to improve the quality of undergraduate education in the U.S. And so I think a lot about college education and innovation in student learning in college. And I, and I then think about, you know, K-12 education and learning and all that stuff sort of, there's a little bit of a synergy there. And I guess I'll, I'll pause there and, and see what questions you all have.
Steve has a question.
Are we doing the microphone? I'll repeat, I'll repeat the questions.
Okay. Then probably that's.
So I know you were active during the pandemic. Could you tell me a little bit more about the food pantry and how that worked, what you did there?
Sure. I love talking about the food pantry, so I'll try to, I'll try to like, you know, condense it down.
Two minutes.
Yeah, two, yeah, okay, two minutes. So when schools closed, it was not clear that APS had a plan ready to go to get, get the school meals to kids, right? And so we knew, we knew those kids were going to miss breakfasts and lunches and they were going to be expected to be doing virtual learning at home. And you can't learn when you're hungry, right? If you come to school and you get breakfast and then you get lunch, then you're all set. But, you know, and so the initial response was, let's get some, well, and the community in 22204 was very hard hit by the pandemic. And people were, these were families where their jobs were gone immediately, right? Taxi drivers, hotel, you know, employees, all kinds of service industry workers, and their jobs were gone immediately. So we said, we said, we'll, we'll give out food on the three Fridays leading up to spring break and then schools will reopen. And of course, they did not. And we continued on. And we ran that food pantry every week. We did 63 out of 70 weeks. So from March 2020 to August 2021, we opened that food pantry almost every single week. And we were serving on average 140 to 150 families a week. And we had partners and we, we built community partnerships and, and we talked to the families about what do you need, like what are we giving you that you don't need and what, what are we not giving you that you do need? And we also kind of made it, I'll do, I'll do this really quickly. We also made it kind of a one-stop shop. So on Friday afternoons, we were out there giving out food. The principal and the assistant principal of the school were out there answering questions for parents. The librarians were out there giving out library books that kids had checked out online during the week. And they could bring their books back and get their book. So it was like this outdoor library was happening. The ITC from the school was out there fixing kids' iPads, which had broken during the week or solving tech problems. And so it was an extraordinary effort to sort of not only just meet the, meet the kids' needs, meet the families' basic needs, but also create community. And of course, we had tons and tons of volunteers involved. So it created a community for a whole lot of people. And it, it was this one-stop-shop model that really, that really helped everybody through a really difficult time. And we still run it once a month outdoors and we have an indoor food pantry of non-perishable foods. And so it's really, yeah. We did about, I think we saw about 120 families yesterday. Okay.
Sure. What do you think is the single biggest issue facing APS at this moment?
Oh gosh, you know, I, I anticipated that question. The single biggest issue is, it's really tough because I see things in complexity. I see things sort of holistically. And when I think about APS, I think about all the moving parts. I will say that I, I notice quite a bit a theme of inconsistency in our system. So what happens at one school that's a really great program only happens at that school? Or, you know, something that's going, something that's designed at the, in the central office that might be designed by central office staff, thoughtfully using lots of data, engaging people in a process, it's then sort of sent forth into the schools. And then there's a great deal of inconsistency about how something is implemented. And so I know that's not a very specific answer, but I do, I do watch that pattern of inconsistency. And I think, you know, we've talked, people talk a lot about being a system of schools versus a school system. I think that's sort of jargony. But, but it's true that we do, we do want, I want to see creativity and innovation in individual schools, yes. But I also want to see things implemented in a consistent manner. And, and if we've got something great going on at a particular school, let's figure out how to replicate it in other places. And I think about that related to the achievement gap. Because if we're digging into the data significantly, we can look at where, in what schools are certain kids performing better and what is it that's going on there that we could replicate in other schools? So.
So you mentioned the achievement gap. And I think what sometimes in Arlington, it's described as kind of a north-south gap. Do you think that's the issue? And if that's, if that's kind of oversimplification, how do you fix the gap that you described? The achievement gap?
Sure. So the question was about the achievement gap and is it a north-south issue or where does it lie, I guess? And then sort of what to do about it? So I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it's necessarily a north-south. I mean, obviously you see a little bit of that dynamic. But I think we have to look and watch for where are there kids excelling and where are there not kids excelling across the whole system? And who are those kids and what can we do to serve, serve them better? I sort of think of a range of different possibilities around addressing some of that. So let me think of a, a good example. I would say, sorry, there's a bit of movement in the room, so I'm distracted for a moment.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. So. Totally now lost my train of thought.
For the kids.
That's right.
So north-south achievement?
North-south achievement, yeah. Yeah, I don't, you know, I try not to think about things in north-south as much. I used to do that quite a bit. But I really do want to think a lot about our sort of a system as a whole. And I guess I would say, I, this is going to sound really geeky of me. This sort of will demonstrate how I think about things at a sort of systemic and policy kind of level. But I think about planning factors. So does everybody know what the plant, what planning factors in APS sort of means or looks like? You know, so there's sort of, if you have, you know, 500, you know, if you have 460 kids at a school, you get one math coach. And this is a terrible example because this is actually not right, so it should, it should be, but if you get, you know, if you have 525 kids, then you get two, right? So there's like a split, a division, and that's a version of equity, right? But it's only based on the number of kids, okay? They're not looking at who the kids are and what their needs are, right? And some people would say, well, but that's what Title I is for. So Title I schools get federal resources and they can, and they can have an additional math coach or, you know, being, I'm saying math coaches and it's terrible because everybody just gets one and that's, that's the system for math coaches. But I maybe think it should be different. So they don't look at who the kids are. So you should be looking at, and the Title I, it does provide additional resources. But I can tell you, we have a significant achievement gap, so I don't think that Title I is necessarily solving the problem, right? So I think we need to also be looking at things like our own planning factors for certain kinds of positions or certain kinds of resources and, and digging a little deeper into sort of equity issues with that. So.
All right. And if you could just repeat the question in the microphone, answer it, I'd say it. What changes, if any, would you make to APS's technology policy and specifically with respect to the APS's one-to-one iPad policy for the youngest learners?
Okay. So the question is about what changes would I make to the technology policy and to the, or should be made? And then to the one-to-one?
For even the youngest learners?
Okay. Can you clarify what you mean by the technology policy?
So just every kid gets an iPad in middle school from books, how to ask or use in the classroom.
Okay. So the, the whole array of how kids use technology in the classroom, et cetera, and especially the youngest kids?
The apps, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So when I got involved with the Advisory Council on Teaching and Learning a couple of years ago, I, I tried to pose this question of, what do we know about how these apps, especially in elementary school, how these apps are impacting learning? Do they have a positive impact on learning? Do they not? Like what are we doing to evaluate that impact? And the answer at the time, and this was under the previous superintendent, the previous assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, the answer was like, basically no. Like we don't know. We don't have evaluation in place for how do these technologies support learning? They talked about, and they have talked more recently about like, what's the number of minutes that students spend on the devices? And they, and there's data about, there's information available about how a, an app can, what kinds of information the teacher can get from, you know, the, the progress that the student is making through an app that's sort of developmental, right? So the student, if they, they can't do the work on, on the app, they don't move forward. But once they, you know, master something, then they do move forward and they can look at data from that, I think is the general gist of it. And I guess my, my response is, I feel strongly that we are not doing enough to learn what the impact is on student learning of all of the technology, especially at the younger grades. I know that there is a lot of critique, there's a lot of sort of buzz around paper and pencil versus, you know, device, right? My own personal experience has been that my kids do spend a fairly, a fair amount of time with paper and pencil and not with devices. But I'm going to go back to my theme around what's the biggest problem? It's inconsistent, right? And so some parents are experiencing, you know, lots of device use and some parents are experiencing less and more paper and pencil, right? And so I think it's honestly an area that needs a lot of unpacking of what is going on in different schools, different classrooms? How is it useful or not useful to student learning? And, and what's the cost? And whether we are spending, or whether we're spending the right amount, too much, too little, et cetera? I have so many thoughts, but I'll, I'll pause on that one. We can always come back to it.
Well, thank you. So I have a question about, I think, English learners or also people whose language might be their first language, might not be English. I think if I, if I'm correct with the statistics, a quarter of elementary school students in Arlington fall in that category where they may not speak English because of English at home with their parents. So what do you think Arlington Public Schools is doing right with those students and where can they, where can they improve with those specific students who are probably increasingly going to do more of the student body?
Yeah. It's, it is just, sorry, repeat the question, sorry. The question's about English learners who comprise, I believe, about 20% of the students in Arlington, although more at some schools and less at others. What are we doing well for English learners and what, what could we be doing better, right? So I don't think that Sam knows that I have spent the past two years on the English Learners' Advisory Committee for ACTL. So I've been actually spending a bunch of time on this very question of what are we doing well for English learners? And I will say that one of the biggest challenges is the communication with the families and the parents. Because generally speaking, this is a broad generalization, but I'm guessing nobody's going to really argue with it. The more engaged the parents are in their children's education, the better things go. And one of the big challenges is when the parents at home don't speak English and frankly, don't have not themselves experienced the American public education system or education in our country at all, or, you know, have had some mix of their own educational experience, right? And so we don't do a good job of communicating with those parents, engaging with those parents, meeting them where they are. So one of the things we did this past year on the English Learners' Committee was we went to several schools that have high population and sat down and met with parents and went through a script of questions to ask them sort of, what, what do you need? What, how are your kids doing? How can we communicate better with you, et cetera? And I think one of the critical pieces is that you do have to bring the conversation to them as opposed to expecting them to come to us. So I, I think another example I'll share is that we, we tend to think about the school year as, as, you know, the school year begins in, in September or now August. And I'm looking at Brandon, he's laughing. He's like, yeah, now, now August. And then, you know, we proceed through the year. And the reality is, especially with English learners, they arrive at any point during the year. They enroll, so I, I was talking to the assistant principal at Randolph the other day. She said, yeah, we have one or two kids every month arrive. And they generally have just arrived in our country or, you know, from some other place that, and they are completely, you know, sort of lost. I was talking to folks at Wakefield since this, from, from the end of September when they have their enrollment numbers to about February or March, they had 54 English learners enroll at Wakefield, right? And so it's an ongoing, you have to be supporting those kids all the time because they don't just show up in September and everything magically flows from there. You have to be attentive to sort of the transitions and the transients and, and then the work of engaging those families. And honestly, I think a lot of that needs to come, that work of engaging the families needs to come supported from the central office and, and because teachers need to do the work of engaging directly with those kids and working with that. And the central office needs to do a better job of communicating with the families. So.
Do you believe the county provides enough support to APS? Please comment from the perspective of both monetary and non-monetary.
Sure. And so the question is whether the county provides enough support to APS, both in terms of money and in terms of other like resources or partnership. You know, in the current fiscal year, we have a robust budget. It was a, not a difficult budgeting process and the county seemed to work well with the school system to provide the funds that are necessary. And I know that the county has often filled a gap for the school system, sometimes reluctantly. But they've often filled the gap when, when the school system makes, you know, makes the case that we need another $10 million or $13 million or whatever, whatever the gap is. And I've seen that happen over the past few years at least. I guess I would say that, you know, there is always more work to be done to align the priorities of the schools and the county board's understanding of those priorities and commitment and shared responsibility for, you know, our school system. And I think that also goes to broader partnership and collaboration between county and schools. You know, I'll share a really specific example, but I think it's sort of indicative. You know, there is, we have a crisis in mental health, right? And among teenagers and also among younger kids now. And the, the school system is sort of doing what they can do on that front. And then the county has the Department of Human Services and sort of they have resources and services. And there's some, you know, engagement and interaction between those two, but there could be much more. And again, a very specific example would be, you know, if there's a psychologist who's in the Department of Human Services who's, who's meeting with kids, at the moment, that person is not allowed to come and meet with the kids at the school. The child has to leave school, their parents have to come transport them to the DHS office to meet with that, you know, counselor or therapist or psychologist. And like, why couldn't, why couldn't like, they come to the school? If they're going to meet with, you know, some number of kids at the same high school, couldn't they come there and have an office space and meet with kids rather than all of this back and forth? So that's just a really specific example, but I think there's probably a lot of those kinds of things that where we could have a better synergy in terms of services that are in schools and then services that are in the county and bringing those things together.
Okay. Well, so I wanted to talk about the issue of the pandemic, which obviously could involve a lot of us, but it was unique in the school environment that's been for in school for a while and the issue of lost learning and how big of an issue do you think that is? And do you think Arlington Public Schools is doing enough to address what happened during the pandemic and kids not being in school?
Sure. Okay. So the question is about the pandemic and learning loss, kids not learning during that. They learned during virtual learning, but maybe not, didn't develop quite as far as we, you know, they normally would have. And then is APS doing enough to address that? So I guess I would start at the back end of that and just say, I have yet to see a really thoughtful and comprehensive vision and plan for addressing learning loss from the pandemic. I also think that there is, that we have to, and I'll go back to what I said at the beginning, we have to sort of meld the, we want students to achieve, we want them to regain sort of that momentum and we want, I would love us to have sort of a renewed focus on student learning. And we can't do that while kids still are sort of missing the basic skills of like how to function in, in the classroom, in community with each other. And, and so I sort of want it all. I want, I want us to get there where kids really do feel ready to learn and they feel supported and all their, you know, and they're, they're in much better shape sort of in terms of their mental health. And I want us to have a good comprehensive plan for how we're going to move kids along. And I really think about that as a broader vision for student learning, which I just don't feel like we see. And it's maybe not necessarily even specific to pandemic learning loss, but just overall, what is it that we hope and want and expect kids to be able to know and do when they have exited, when they, when they've finished elementary school, when they've finished middle school and when they're exiting our school system? What is it that we want them to be able to, to know and be able to do? And we know we're not there right now because of the pandemic, but we also really haven't necessarily fully articulated that piece. necessarily fully articulated that piece. Um, you know, again, this is an area where I could talk for a long time, so I'll, I'll pause on that. I, I guess the specific thing that I know a lot of people are talking about right now, there's a lot of buzz around, um, uh, tutoring, right? So there's been an investment made in tutoring, um, in the budget for next year for, uh, secondary, I think it's sixth to 12 graders, and it's using an outside company that, so if you're, if you're a student, you're struggling to write a paper, you will have access to sort of on-demand, you know, tutoring. Um, I've read some articles about that recently. Um, it seems like that is a good model and a lot of people are going there. It also seems like there's, there's things that are going to work better in that than others. So for example, if you're accessing the tutoring, that's great. It works best if you are routinely seeing the same tutor. And these big, big tutoring companies, um, are staffing up and serving all these big school systems. And I, I have not seen that in fact you would have that sort of one-to-one relationship with the same tutor. Um, and so I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're putting a lot of, um, I think a lot of parents, maybe a lot of the community is saying, okay, we're going to, you know, we're going to have tutoring. And I'm not a hundred percent convinced that it is in fact going to solve all problems, right? And so I think again, we need a bigger vision, we need a bigger plan, we need to look at a, a lot of, a lot of possibilities of how we can move forward and not, you know, not just chase after one thing, so.
This is somewhat related. The question is, what's your familiarity with American Rescue Plan funds that were spent at APS and the board's input or oversight was and whether you agree with the allocations?
Oh gosh, I'm going to confess that this is not an area that I have like significantly dug into in my thinking. Um, uh, you know, I, I understand the big picture, right? There were funds made available, school systems had the choice of how to use them. I think there's been a lot of critique about how APS used those funds. Um, I, I, I guess for my own, for my own sort of thinking about it, I think about, okay, well, you know, going forward, I, you know, I don't know how to unpack what, what might have happened this past year. I guess I would say going forward, you know, my focus would be on, again, what's the plan? What's the vision? What are all the moving parts? Should we focus on, um, sort of the mental health and wellness and, and school climate and, and, um, uh, sort of that basic skills piece first? Should we focus on academics? Should we be doing those things together? I would be thinking very holistically about it and, and, and very, and, um, and wanting to see sort of what are the evidence-based practices that are going to make sense and be the best investment, maybe the best use of those funds.
Well, I will kind of shift things to a little bit of a different topic, uh, but one that I think has been in the news and I think is a concern for some parents about, um, recent physical alteration of, of alter, altercations at, at public schools. And I think Arlington Public Schools noted that there has been an uptick in physical incidents. Um, so I want to get your, your sense of, um, what, what do you think Arlington Public Schools should do to handle that? Uh, and then also, um, kind of address the issue of, of school safety officers, uh, who are different than SROs, but, but what do you think the role of those visuals are? And, and just this topic, which I think is kind of a sensitive one and I think parents have concerns about.
Sure.
Will you repeat the question?
Yes, so that, yeah, I was just thinking, how do I repeat that question? So the question is about, um, uh, student safety, physical, sort of literally like physical altercations and, um, the concerns that parents have about that, the balance of that with sort of what's the role of, um, the safety officers, which is different from SROs, right? And sort of how are we going to move forward? Did I get all the pieces?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay. Um, you know, I go back in my mind to the, the idea of sort of restorative justice and that we want to be focused on, um, you know, not necessarily just like punishing the behavior or, you know, labeling the kids, but we want to be in a, in a, in a mode of sort of how do we support, engage, partner? I think partnership with fam, between families and schools is a really important piece. I think one of the things that has been sort of breaking down at this moment has been communication with parents. I mean, I, I have a middle schooler myself, um, and I have heard of some things that have gone on at her middle school. I've heard about them from people other than the principal and I feel like I should be hearing more from the principal directly. Um, we did, they did actually, the PTA, uh, organized a session with the principal and the principal talked us through sort of how the communications pieces can work when there is something that happens. But I have to say, again, I go back to the theme of inconsistency because I have heard that at other middle schools, there have been other communications from the principals or other ways. And so I, I really want and, and hope that the leadership of those schools is getting a lot of support from the central office about how we want to approach these kinds of situations, what it is we're doing to support leadership in the schools that then is going to trickle down to supporting the counselors and the, and the security officers and the, um, teachers so that we can all sort of be working together on, on these problems, um, and communicating more effectively, um, with families and parents about it. Um, you know, there is a little bit of a hard stock when you were talking about literally, you know, fights and, you know, there's things that do have to be addressed sort of immediately, but there's a bigger picture, longer term, sort of school climate and culture and, and sort of, again, sort of getting past the sort of disruption of the pandemic into a healthier place for everybody.
All right. This is a very long question.
I'm doing pretty good though on the, on the reading. I'm, I'm, I'm getting there.
Okay. What guiding principles would you apply to determine what issues school board members should vote on? For example, do you think the school board should have voted on return to school policies last year? Some criticize the school board for not debating issues and for seeming to rubber stamp APS decisions, while others in leadership have criticized disagreement. Can you discuss whether you view the school board as a body for debate or whether it is more important to show an unanimous front and how your actions if you are on the school board will reflect those views?
Okay. All right, so the question, the topic I'll say is-
Voting philosophy.
Voting philosophy on the school board and the, and the nuances of it have to do with the extent to which the school board publicly debates things, the extent to which, um, they may be perceived to rubber stamp things.
And the return to school votes last year, there weren't. Yeah, I think we might have been the only school board not to vote on this.
And the, and the return to school votes. Yes, I've heard that critique quite a bit. What I've never had anybody explain to me is, um, sort of where in, in policy that falls. In other words, why, what, what is the policy piece that, you know, would say the school board should vote on something or not vote on something? But anyway, um, so what is my voting philosophy? You know, I, I, I think that there is a model of good governance, which is as transparent as possible, right? That you want to, you want to, if you're, you want to bring to leadership sort of the, the thought that you will, um, it's not about what you, I'm struggling with how to articulate this. It's not about what, what, what do we have to share? It's about is there anything in this that we can't share? Or is it all, you know? And, um, and I do think that we are seeing, uh, we do see a lot of five-zero votes on the board. I often watch that and I, and I watch very carefully to see, does it, does it look like they've really done the work and the homework and they've gotten all their questions answered and they really all genuinely are in agreement that this is the way we have to move forward? And, and often I think that's the case. Um, do I think that they have to always, always vote five-zero? No, absolutely not. Like, I think, I think civil disagreement is perfectly fine. Um, and there was another, I'm sorry, because the question was so long. There was another thread in there that I, that I flagged, but no.
Just generally in terms of things that the school board should be voting on? For example, they didn't vote on a lot of the return to school issues last year and that left people feeling like they had unelected votes, you know, all over the shops.
Gotcha, yeah. Right, I mean, there has to be a really positive working relationship and synergy with the superintendent and the school board and agreement on what it is that is coming forward that, that the superintendent's going to bring forward as actual, you know, um, items for action versus, you know, things that are within the purview of the superintendent. And you can, you can, as a board, make the choice to change what is within the purview of the superintendent versus what the board, um, uh, should, should and can be voting on. So I do think there's obviously area where that can be looked at, potentially tweaked, thought about, you know, more holistically in terms of sort of the decision-making, um, uh, you know, responsibilities. Um, sorry, this one is so, there were so many things in there, so my brain is just going in a million different directions. Um, is there any piece of that that I, that I didn't speak to? Um, I guess the, the initial part you said was-
When was, do you think the school board should have voted on return to school policies last year?
Um, honestly, I, I, I guess, do I think they should have? I, I mean, I guess I sort of would say I wish they had. Um, I don't, again, I don't actually know the detail of the policy involved in terms of why they would or wouldn't. Um, I, I, I absolutely am happy to look that up and Allison looks like she knows. So I'll, I'll talk to her after this. Yeah, I just, I just can't, I just don't know.
So, um, we'll, we'll have, I'm going to ask one more question and then feel free, our audience asks questions, you know, we'll try to end it at 30, so I, I can, we can also ask questions if there's not for the audience. But I did want to ask this one because my daughter started in elementary school and I, I want to know a little bit more about Arlington Public Schools' homework policy and, and standard-based grading and, and some of the changes that may have been made and, and kind of that issue and the role should a, the school board have in setting the, the homework policy and the grading policy? Because I think that's something that, um, you know, us sending our kids to school, we're used to the old school A, B, C, D, E, F. Is that changing or?
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I am curious to what, obviously I don't think kindergarten kids have that yet, but when they get a little older, how is that changing and if it's changing?
Sure. So the question's about the homework and grading policies, which are currently being under review by the school board and, and, and changing. Um, and I will say so, and, and about standard-based grading versus sort of the letter grading. Um, okay, I got to do, this is another one where I have to do this succinctly because I, this has been something I've been working on all spring. Um, as chair of the Advisory Council on Teaching and Learning, we've done two conversations about it with a large group, but I've also been reading the policies very closely myself. The deadline for feedback is tomorrow, so I have drafts sitting on my desk at home, uh, all marked up, uh, with my questions and comments. Um, uh, the homework policy right now is actually not changing a lot. What they are doing with the homework policy, um, is articulating more clearly, um, in the policy and then in the related PIPs, and I'll say what that means in a second, um, what the expectations are and how, how this should be working in all the schools. Um, and it comes back to that theme of consistency. So, um, uh, so let me just say, you know, policies like these ones, I think are best set by the school board in a very broad sense so that there is then room for implementation in, in sort of creative ways. So the policy sets sort of the theme, and I think the overall theme of the homework policy is that, you know, homework is designed to reinforce learning. Um, it's not a way to introduce new information or new topics or, you know, new things to students, but it's a way to sort of keep them engaged, um, with what they've been learning and sort of reinforce and practice, right? And I think when you get a kindergartner, you know, if there's anything that they're going to be asked to do at home, it's really to just practice things that they were, you know, doing that day. Um, and in elementary school, the policy was and will, seems like it will remain, that homework in elementary school is really about, uh, math, you know, literacy and math and reinforcing literacy and math. Um, and then when you get into upper levels, you know, that, that it expands a little bit more into other areas that you potentially have homework. Um, and then what it also does is say, how many, how many minutes is sort of the target? Because we want students to, and this is, sorry, mixing up policy and PIP here and I'll say that in a second, but we want students to have, um, that it's not all focused on academics. We want them to engage in after-school activities or sports or arts or, you know, you know, be in the theater club or whatever. And so we want, we don't want to have homework be just sort of a burden that, that funnels us, our attention all into sort of just academics all the time. Um, and so policy sets sort of that broad thematic, you know, this is, this is the sort of philosophy that we have, right? The PIP, which stands for Policy Implementation Procedure, that's like what, how that's going to get implemented at different, at the schools, right? And so the PIP lays out things like, what's the reasonable sort of minutes per day for elementary students and minutes per day for high school students and, you know, and sort of what is the, um, how is this going to get, you know, sort of implemented and managed at the school level? Um, and so when I looked at the homework policy this spring, overall, I, I, there isn't a significant change to this sort of philosophy. It, it actually just articulates out more sort of how this should work. Um, the grading policy, which is a separate policy and set of PIPs, is also under review and these two things do kind of go hand in hand a little bit. So, um, the grading policy represents a little bit more of a shift into a model that is, um, related to, um, evaluating students' academic achievement without, um, bias and without, um, having it, um, be a reflection of behavior, meaning a student who always turns in their homework on time may not actually have mastered the material. And a student who has after-care responsibility for siblings and a part-time job and other disruptions at home may not turn in their homework on time, all the time, but they actually have mastered the material. And so the idea is to move into a space where we are, um, we are grading for the mastery of the content and the material and we are not, um, and we're supporting the kids and not, um, and not making them feel inferior because they have responsibilities or other things going on in their lives that may impact their ability to behave in certain ways. So that's the sort of philosophy as I understand it, uh, and that, that's a very, that's a snippet. Um, and then again, you have sort of, um, the implementation of that, um, in terms of grading. And that's an area where there's lots of work to be done because, um, it requires teachers to shift how they're doing things and thinking about things, right? There's a lot of teachers in our system who have always graded on, you know, in a set of ways and letter grades and, and have their own philosophy, right, about this. And so this is a long-term sort of process where more and more teachers will sort of get engaged in these conversations. I know they had a group of about 100 teachers that worked this year on the PIP and trying to understand how they would shift, and I think it's going to unfold over time.
Thank you. Well, um-
I have one more question.
Oh.
I would love to ask anyone one more question.
I do have one. Um, I wanted to know from the perspective, I didn't know if anyone was going to ask this from the submission, but about, uh, teachers. Um, like what is your, I know, you know, you might not have everything, but the initial view on supporting teachers, especially the compensation?
Sure, the question, okay, question is about teachers, supporting teachers, compensation, and then sort of beyond, I guess, right? So, you know, I, I will say in the very first conversation I had, uh, after I said I was going to run for school board, somebody came to a conversation and they were a teacher and they asked that question, and I said, absolutely a hundred percent, I am committed to not just the fact that we are doing a major compensation package now, but that we cannot go back to the times when we just said, well, we just can't, we just can't do a cost of living increase, we, we just can't do. We have to stay committed to what's been laid out, right? And the school board must stay committed to, um, teacher compensation over time. And that may- And that may mean that other things can't get funded. But I feel really strongly that we wound up in a situation where we used to be, you know, the best teacher salaries in the region, now we are not, and it's going to take us some time to get back into that really competitive place. But if we don't have great teachers, then we have no great schools. So I'm really committed on the compensation piece, and I know there probably will be really tough budget decisions down the road, but I just, you know, and I think that is the superintendent's outlook as well. I think that that is, you know, that is sort of the commitment of the current leadership. So in terms of other resources, we need to ask teachers. We need to ask teachers, what do you need to do your job, right? And I actually was in a conversation, the English Learners Committee, one of the things we did was we went and talked to some English learner teachers, and when we were going out and doing conversations in the community, and we said, what do you need to do your job, right? Because the compensation piece is really important, but, and, you know, the school board, even the central administration, they shouldn't just be deciding, it really should be coming from the teachers in terms of sort of advocacy, and this is what we need and this is what we could use. I'll share the example that with the English learner teachers, it was, it goes back to those 54 English learners that joined Wakefield after September. They said it takes too long for them to get their laptops. And so then we have to do double lesson plans because we have to teach for the kids who have a laptop in the room and the ones who don't. And so they were like, could we just get some loaner laptops that we can have a pool of laptops in our department so that the kids, where it takes IT department and the central office two months to get them their laptop, we would have one that they could use for class. So stuff like that, I think that's, we need the teachers to tell us, what do you need? And then we need to figure out how to make it happen. And sometimes it's simple and small like that, and sometimes it's obviously, you know, bigger picture things.
So you've mentioned that the secondary tutoring, which is going to be virtual at this point, which is probably the high dose of tutoring that we've all been advocating for and everything, but so worrying obviously about the effectiveness of that, but what would be your kind of top three things that you would do, let's say money was no object, or the opportunity cost of prioritizing, like you said, student-facing positions? What would be the top three things that you would spend money on? It's obviously not just virtual tutoring, but what would be the ways that you would try to address learning loss?
Okay. So the question is the top three kind of if money were no object to address learning loss. Yeah, I mean, you know, my mind immediately goes to class size. You know, we have reduced class sizes this year a little bit. I would say that is a critical area where, you know, smaller class sizes, more, you know, ability for face-to-face, you know, and one-on-one and/or small group interactions are critical. If it can't come in the form of class size, then can it come in the form of more sort of resources, resource teachers in the schools? So I think of the example in, when I was, when my kids were at Randolph, and I was very involved at Randolph, because they were a Title I school, they had their math coach, and then they also had two assistants who, and so they had this little math team, and they were able to sort of plan together and then go forth into the different classrooms and work with teachers and do more differentiation in the classroom, do more small group work. But that was a team of three, and two of them were part-time. And so I could see how it could be really effective, and the math coaches could really help work with the teachers in the classroom around what's effective pedagogy and literally come in themselves and work, but you would need more of those kinds of positions. And I just think that sort of those teams and the synergies, you know, that you can achieve, but it's more positions. And then I think the other thing that I would say around learning loss and if money were no object would be shift the ratio of psychologists, which where we are behind in terms of what's recommended and best practice in the state, so that we have more counselors and psychologists who are able to support kids. And the other piece, and this is really pie in the sky because it's a lot of money, but it's something that I hope we're going to do incrementally over the next, you know, coming years, is shifting how we support students with disabilities and the planning factors for students with disabilities. Because we have seen evidence and we're unpacking that information that's been brought forward by the Arlington Special Ed Advisory Committee around how the planning factors disadvantage students with disabilities, and we're not making progress on the inclusion goal that we have for students with disabilities. And that, that requires an investment in more teachers and more staff and more people to do that work, and I think it's really important. Hey, Josh.
Hi, hey. So we're in a housing crisis. You know, we've, there are plans on the table to build more housing in Arlington, to missing middle houses, to a planned, planned some boulevard and other, and other means. A lot of the, maybe the primary argument you hear from opponents is, what about the school, school overcrowding, more students, you know, more than four schools? What do you think is the school board's role? How do you feel about this, the general idea? And what do you think the school board's role is in helping to sort of sync up those two, the housing process and the school planning process?
Sure. So, you know, I come at this with a bunch of things I've done in my, in the recent past. So I served on the South Arlington Working Group in 2015, which was, we were trying to figure out a site for a new 725-seat elementary school in South Arlington where there was a crisis in seats, right? And there was all this stuff about the seats, the seats, the seats, and how many and where and everything, and the data was terrible. And there was, I will say, it was so disheartening at how the schools and county were not working effectively together to figure out where could we put an elementary school and how could that work? And it was so clear. We had like a 50-person working group and we met for six months, and it was so clear that that relationship was broken. Recently, recently, I saw a presentation during a working session with the board where our planning staff talked about how do we project enrollments? And it was stunning how much better it is now, and it's because the school staff are working directly collaboratively with the county staff. And that is where I think the school board needs to be constantly saying, this has to happen. We have to be working together on planning so that we, you know, and they weren't. I could see it, you know, in 2015. And then you can see now that it's gotten a lot better, but we have to stay the course on that. And if the, if it isn't happening, we have to understand why and how to fix it. Because that collaboration is going to be absolutely critical for exactly what you just described. And I think APS being proactive about planning instead of reactive to, oh my gosh, now we need, you know, now we need a whole nother school, or now we need so many seats or whatever. They need to be out in front of it much more than they have been, and that really does require that synergy. And it needs to happen at all levels, right? It needs to be the school board working collaboratively with the county board, needs to be the superintendent working with the county manager, and it means staff need to be working together. So I would have a commitment to always be fostering that kind of relationship building and that kind of work.
Okay, well, if there's no more questions, thanks everyone. I think that we'll probably stick around for a little while if anyone wants to talk to our awards, but thanks for coming and, you know, hope
Wait, do you have any endorsement of this?
Oh.
Steve.
Steve would be better.
What is, when is the endorsement vote? And what the
It's June 1st at our regular committee meeting.
June 1st at the regular committee meeting.
Committee members will vote on whether to endorse.
So committee members will vote whether to endorse on June 1st.
Okay. Well, thanks.